Okay, good evening and thank you for joining us for our October 12th Board of Education meeting. Please join us in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So before I turn it over to Dr. Byrne for the report of the superintendent, I just wanted to make note of the great collaboration between the city and the police department and the school district on pedestrian safety efforts that have started this week. You know, really want to obviously focus on keeping everybody as safe as possible. So we really appreciate that. And then just one note, which I forgot to say last time is on our last agenda, we actually had a resolution to advocate for the SALT deduction to be returned. That's happening at the federal level, but that was part of our last agenda and I noticed afterwards that I did not mention it. So I just wanted to make that note and you know, obviously that's been something that has hit Westchester County particularly hard over the last several years. So you know, we're hoping that that advocacy can continue. So now I will turn it over to Dr. Byrne for the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our October 12th Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone had a nice extended weekend. In case you haven't attended a board meeting recently, we are back to holding in-person meetings here in the middle school multipurpose room. But given that we must still be mindful of State Department of Health restrictions on the number of people allowed in school buildings, we're also continuing to broadcast our meetings on YouTube live. Additionally, all attendees and participants are required by order of the governor to wear face masks. I'm happy to report that the garnets came out on top of the Huskies in the 94th iteration of the game a week ago Saturday on October 2nd. We thank Harrison for hosting this year and look forward to welcoming everyone to Nugent Stadium next year. The final score was 36-10, which doesn't truly reflect how hard fought a game it was. Congratulations to the team, coaches and parents of the players on both squads. Congratulations also to the winners of the Chris Mello Scholarship Award, A.J. Troilo for Harrison and Jack Garnett and Kayden Whaling for Rye. The boys are all exemplary student athletes and teammates. Last week, we shared with our community a traffic and pedestrian safety message that Jen alluded to at the beginning of the meeting, and that was created in conjunction with the city. The message came about as a result of numerous instances of dangerous driving in and around our schools. The city announced that they will be stepping up their presence in enforcement of traffic laws through citations. It's unfortunate that it has to come to this, but we can't afford to take any chances with the safety of Rye's children. Also, last week, we distributed a call for community members to serve on three district committees, audit, finance and technology. MyRye carried the information and I'm sure the Rye record will also in the next issue. In the meantime, all the information and applications are posted on the homepage of the district website in the district news section. Or please reach out to our public information officer, Sarah Durman. Applications are due on November 1st, so you have some time. As always, we deeply appreciate the time and energy of our community is so willing to give to these committees and to every facet of our schools. Since our last Board of Education meeting on September 28th, we've had eight cases of COVID in the district, one at Milton, five at Midland, one at Rye Middle School and one at Rye High School. Several of the cases at Midland resulted in some quarantines, but we're not seeing the same number of individuals needing to quarantine as we did last year. In our dealings with the Department of Health, we are finding that wearing well-fitted masks properly and being fully vaccinated is making a huge difference in preventing quarantines of asymptomatic individuals. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Byrne. So I think we'll just keep moving along because we have two presentations to get through. So we'll start with the external audit.
So if I may, it's that time of year again where we gather early in the school year to review the external audit, which takes place over the summer. It's a review of all of our financial activities for the prior year. So we'll be presenting the 2021 school year, right? Because we're in 21. Okay. And without further ado, I'm actually going to pass it off to our external auditors, O'Connor Davies, represented here by Chris Coff, our partner, and Melissa Zott, who was our senior manager onsite. And again, I just have to say, this was our first year working with Melissa. Chris has been with us, so I'm not going to gush about him. But I am, I do want to take a moment to just thank Melissa profusely. She got assigned to us at the very last minute. Not going to lie, we were like, oh God, here we go again. But I have to tell you, it was an amazing experience. She comes with a lot of knowledge and information. She was a great help to us and we really enjoyed our time with her. So thank you, Melissa, very much. And I'm going to hand it off.
All right. Well, thank you very much and thank you for the kind words. Kind of took away my thunder. I was going to thank Gabby and her staff because we did put a new manager on this year. And it is a good way to keep a fresh look at a client because every manager does different things, different tests. So in a way, it was a little harder on your staff, you know, when you have a new auditor because they are looking at a variety of different things. So we appreciate all the assistance and the input from the audit committee. Your audit committee is very active. We appreciate that because it keeps us on our toes a too. You know, too many times that we don't get input, but we don't have that problem here. So that's great. So thank you very much. All right. Very quickly, I'm going to go over the required communications with the board. Melissa will take you through your general fund. That's your main operating fund. She'll talk about your revenues, some of the variances with the budget you adopted. Then we'll talk about some of the expenditures and again, comparing to the adopted budget. Then we'll look at your fund balance because everybody's always interested in where I am and where I'm going. And then you do operate some other funds, so she'll walk you through those other funds. And then we just put an informational slide in there for debt service so that when you're doing your budget, you can plan because you can see your debt service requirements out for five years in the future. So you know, it helps you with your budget process. So the required communications. We have to talk about your responsibilities as a board. And the first one is that you have to select and implement accounting policies that are appropriate for a district of your size and complexity. Your financial statements have to be prepared in accordance with the US GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. You have to maintain effective internal control over your financial reporting. In other words, you have to safeguard your assets. You have to be in compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, agreements. So on a test basis, we look at those items. You also have to provide us any financial records that we need related to the audit. And most of all, as a board, you have to set the proper tone for people in the community or employees where if they have an issue, they feel comfortable coming to you. And we do that by reading the minutes and we see that your public participation and people are allowed to speak. So you know, congratulations because we did view some of the videos and people do come and participate. And that's what we'd like to see. Our responsibilities. Our main deliverable is the independent auditor's report, the opinion. We're very happy to say that you received an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean opinion. That's the highest level of assurance a auditor can provide a client. We also do an extra classroom activities report. Basically, we look at all your clubs and we give you a report on the money in and the money out and the balances that are available to each club. The required communications, which you're doing right now. And then we do issue a management letter with some suggestions for items that we noticed during the course of the audit. We have to communicate any fraud or illegal acts that are noted during the audit. We're happy to say that were not noted. We do interview different people every year. We try to interview board members and then a different employee every year to get a flavor for what their feelings are. We didn't encounter any difficulties during the course of the audit and that's pleased to say because with everybody working, the combination of remote, in person, it's very difficult on your staff to provide us all the documentation. There were no uncorrected misstatements. In other words, during the course of the audit, if we noticed an adjustment that needed to be made, your team made the adjustment. There was no adjustments left hanging. We had no disagreements with management. And just to give you an idea of the timeline, we came in June 23rd and 24th for our preliminary work. The field work was begun on August 9th. And then the final report was issued basically last week when we presented to the audit committee and they accepted the report. So quick overview, your general fund, we have five columns here. They're the same columns that are in the main report. So what we start with is your original budget. That's the budget adopted by the board. The final budget, after you make modifications over the course of the year. Your actual results. The next column is what's known as encumbrances, purchase orders issued during the end of the year where maybe the entire item wasn't fulfilled. So therefore, it rolls forward to the next budget year. And then your variance with the final budget. So if we go to the first column, the original budget, and you go three numbers up from the bottom, you can see that there's a negative $2,872. So when you put the budget together last year, in a perfect world, you would have utilized $2,872,000 of your surplus. That number is made up of 872,000 of encumbrances from the prior year that roll forward. And then the board and the audit committee and your finance committee decided to use $2 million of your prior year's surplus in order to balance the budget and to keep taxes at a reasonable level, stay within the cap. Again, knowing what was going on in the community, you made that effort to try to keep your taxes as low as possible, yet still provide all the services to the children that you needed to provide. So you took 1.5 million from your unassigned fund balance, your free fund balance, and 500,000 you had put away into a retirement reserve. So you drew that money out so that you could pay the retirement bill. Your final budget, you can see it did get modified very slightly. But then we come to the actual column. Instead of utilizing 2.9 of fund balance, you only utilized 48,000. So you basically had a $2 million budgetary surplus. The good news about that is that money is put back into your surplus and can be used in future years again to keep your taxes and to address emergencies that arise during the course of the year. And we all know this year you had unforeseen circumstances happen all the time between remote, in-person, COVID and all the other things. I think the board did a very good job in trying to stay within your original budget and still provide all the services. At this point, I'll turn it over to Melissa and she'll talk to you about the variations that we found.
So on this slide, this is going to cover the major revenues. We'll discuss most of these lines. The columns are the same as the prior slide, except for we've added a 2020 column as well so you can see the year-over-year changes. The first line I want to bring your attention to is the property tax revenue. So the school district did not exceed the tax cap in the past two years. You can see that the revenue came under budget, about 313,000. This was mainly due to tax surgiories that were paid out this year. The next line is your STAR, that's your school tax relief reimbursement. You can see the year-over-year change, it decreased about 230,000. STAR essentially is a calculation where the formula is generally based on population. And we've seen a decline across generally amongst all school districts. The next slide I want to bring you to is going to be the sales tax. It's a couple of lines down. You can see that the sales tax came in about 672,000 over what you had budgeted. The sales tax, Westchester County implemented a 1% increase in the sales tax last year. The school district is still seeing the benefits from this increase, even during the pandemic. The increase is also consistent with the overall New York State trends, which have been positive after the initial decline due to the pandemic. Two lines down below that, there's your day school tuition, which came, the revenue came in under budget, about 285,000. The revenue here is recognized based on the number of students enrolled in other districts. We also generally saw a decrease amongst the school districts due to the pandemic operations. Two lines down below that, that's your earnings on investment, came under budget, about 162,000. This is essentially the interest earned on your cash that you're holding. Interest rates have been at a historic low, so this would cause the unfavorable variance. Below that is your state aid. State aid came above budget of 235,000, but also below from last year. State aid is received on a formula basis from New York State. And you can see through conservative budgeting that the school district did anticipate a reduction in this line. The next line is your other revenues that came in 465,000 over your budget. The other revenues include miscellaneous items and this would, this large variance of the 465 was mainly due to several large donations that the school district received during 2021, including the Rye Fund for Education, which helped assist it with COVID financial pressures. If we move on to the next slide, this is your major expenditures. Same columns as the previous slide, we've added encumbrances as Chris defined. Your operation and maintenance and plant, that ended up increasing over the prior year, about 800,000. That was mainly due to purchases of pandemic-related supplies. Again, the school district did anticipate this increase in spending. Two lines below that is your teaching, your regular school. The increase from the prior year was because of the need for substitutes to address the instruction needs during the pandemic. If you move down to the computer-assisted instruction, you can see there was an increase in spending, about 530,000 from last year. That was mainly due to increased costs to deliver services in a remote environment to the students. I want to bring it to your attention, the teachers' retirement, which increased about 300,000. There was a rate increase in the New York State teachers' retirement system, so that caused an increase from the prior year. And then your other expenditures increase over the prior year mainly due to the tax surgiory settlements related to 2020 and prior year, as well as any associated legal fees for that.
Can I ask one quick question? Can you talk about the health insurance line and just sort of how the original budget to the final, like I know, just walking me through that, is that a typical?
That is.
What that means?
Right. Because what it doesn't account for when we set up the budget is the employee contribution piece that comes as the year progresses. So that, we don't budget that in terms of the expense because it's something that comes as a result of individuals participating in the health insurance. And then that's their piece of what ends up becoming part of the expense. You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to the next slide. Sorry. Thanks, Gabby. So this is the slide that everyone really cares about. This is your general fund, fund balance. The school district here utilizes three buckets, your restricted, your assigned and your unassigned. So as Chris mentioned before, your total fund balance is at 17.9 million. Your restricted, which is the largest bucket, is 11.85. You can see you have 6 million set aside for tax surgiories and that's just to pay judgments and claims and tax surgiory proceedings in the future. And that helps the school district avoid having to borrow for these payments. You can also see that you have 1.7 in your regular ERS retirement with 350,000 from your subsequent year, which is your 2022 budget. And that's to pay for retirement contributions, as well as your TRS of the 1.4 million. You have 2.3 set aside for capital improvements that you would pay for in the future for any capital improvements you have in the school district. And your assigned, you have your purchases on order of 857,000. This would be your encumbrances. As Chris mentioned earlier, that would be the purchase orders the school district has committed paying. And then your subsequent year's expenditures of 1.5, this is the amount of fund balance the school district has decided to utilize in the 22 budget to balance the budget. Therefore, this would have reduced the amount of increase in taxes otherwise if this had not been included. And then the bottom line, the 3.7 million, that's your unassigned balance. This is considered to be free and clear. The school district is within the 4% limit of the 2022 budget. So move to the next one. The school district also operates other funds. You have your capital projects fund, your school lunch fund, debt service and your special purpose. I do want to point out, your capital projects fund has a deficit of 12.8 million dollars. This is an accounting deficit, it's not a true deficit. You do have 23.6 million in short-term bond anticipation notes outstanding, which covers the spending that you've done so far and that you will do in the future. However, governmental accounting does not allow the school district to record this as revenue until it's paid down or converted into permanent financing, which would be like bond obligations. If we want to move to the next slide. So again, this is for the debt service payments that you can use to consider in planning for future budgets. I think that's all we have.
So again, that was a very quick summary of, you know, your school year. I know it was very, an exciting school year, as I said, a lot of changes. If you do have any questions after you digest this, be free to call us and we'd be more than happy to try to come back and explain anything. I know you have a busy agenda and it's hard to do everything in one night. But again, we're just down the street, so if you do have any issues or questions, please feel free to reach out to us. We'd be more than happy to come back and, you know, sit with anybody and answer any questions. Again, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to be the auditors and we appreciate taking the time out of your night to let us present the findings.
The full complement of the report, the findings, the management response are all on the agenda. There's also an action item that we'll ask the board to consider tonight for accepting the audit in anticipation of having our financial package that's due up to the date at the end of this week.
So thank you both for coming and presenting to us and for all the work that, in collaboration that you've done with our business office. I know in years past, I feel like there's always been such a great relationship and, you know, in looking at the reports that are part of the agenda, the items that required action are fairly straightforward, it seemed like. And you know, obviously all of those actions are being worked on to be put into place. I do want to just make sure that nobody has any just sort of questions specifically about what's in here, since we have Chris here now, before he, before both of, both auditors go.
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to again, highlight Gabby and Kathy and her team's work because Chris and Melissa mentioned it, the fact that it's a conservative budget and that you guys think ahead during the pandemic, when all these unforeseen expenses arose with technology and hybrid and everything, just a real testament to you and your team, how, you know, every year you provide such a good, you know, clear-cut conservative budget so that we're able to deal with these emergencies when they arise. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
And I'll make the comment about the management letter and for everyone knows that they, there's never been anything material in it, but there's usually a list of little things that are pop up that could be handled differently. And I think in, definitely in the 10 years I've been doing, this is the shortest list of things I've ever seen. I know a lot of them were things that recurred. So kudos to the team for, you know, we've been talking about it for years, for cleaning up some of the operations and even the little stuff is gone mostly now. So thank you. It's a, it's a, it's great, great work.
Thanks.
Couldn't agree more. All right. Well, thank you both very much again. And I think this is a good segue into more well, things that are being managed well. We're talking about the capital project update.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Melissa. You're good.
Thank you.
So tonight, we have Rob Camigliano, our director of facilities, who in conjunction with Gabby will be presenting the capital project update.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update. So again, it all falls down to the Rye commitment and all the work that we do is centered around students and faculty and the community and just delivering on that promise. So the capital project, I'm sure many of us have been following closely, but for those who haven't, just going to recap some of the, some of the steps that we've gone through. And it's all color-coded, so there's a design process, an SED approval and adjustment process. And then all those are turned to construction documents, which are then bid out for public, for public viewing and contractors to, to, to be awarded. And then it goes into construction and ultimately, the goal is a completed, delivered construction project as, you know, originally intended. And these are the breakdown of the phases. Currently, we're in the phase two, which some of these phases straddle multiple time periods. So the phase two that we began in earnest this summer is going to continue into next And here is the status update of where we are on each of the phases. So the phase two, again, it's multiple, multiple summers. It actually began in April of 2021. A huge chunk of it was completed this summer and it's going to continue evenings. There's, there's teams of workers working in the building at the moment and that continues until it's completed with another major, another major phase next summer for any spaces that can't be accessed because it's going to impact instruction. So that's the phase two. Again, here's a, some quick bullet points of some of the projects that are included in phase two, which are on target for winter 2022 to complete. And I will say that this is definitely an update on, on construction. Every one of, every one of the construction projects that have been started, not, there isn't anything that is totally completed. It's certainly usable and we got it to that point, but everything has to be revisited. No one wants to hear COVID is an excuse, but there's definitely some supply, supply chain issues that we've had to adapt to. And it's become the new normal and that's all factored in. Even before you attempt a project, you, everyone is managing all their supplies and materials and kind of gauging what's going to be in and what's not and what your workarounds are. So that's kind of, that's kind of a new normal. You know, we always had the luxury of having everything readily available and usually the things that didn't come in, it was just because someone kind of dropped the ball and failed to order it. That's not what we're seeing now. So I think it's definitely, it's made everyone very acute of some of that, that future planning and the possibility of having a plan B even before you need one, or even a plan C while you're still working on plan A. So the, as you can see, the color coding in phase two A is, it's not in the construction phase, it's still, it's still being evaluated. And I think we'll speak more to that later on in the presentation.
Now get to the good stuff.
Yeah. The photo, you know, they say a photo is worth a thousand words, right? So the, there are certainly portions, you know, I did mention that nothing is completed, but there's certainly portions that, that are, you know, part of a larger project, but they, but they're, they're delivered. So that's the one hallway that, there's a little photo that's overlapped in the upper left-hand corner. That was a hallway in the high school that we began in April, allowed contractors to access second shift, kind of do some investigation, trying to, trying to expose any, any unforeseen things that are inevitable in a construction project beforehand, so we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be scrambling in the summer. So prior to kids coming in, we, you know, that, that was the same hallway. Our custodial staff definitely took advantage of, you know, having the space free and clear. And we, we painted the walls, we did a, you know, some extra attention on the floor. This way, this way it was, it was, students could come back to it clean and a hallway that we wouldn't have to revisit. So any area that was, where construction was completed and we were able to put our finishing touches, we did. So you could see the gym, it had some extensive work there. There was floor protection for multiple trades. There's actually a hole in a roof, if you could see above the backboard. That's for our future air conditioning. So that's still a work in progress. There's steel that was ordered, we're waiting for that to be craned onto- There's steel that was ordered, we're waiting for that to be craned onto the roof, but it's overlapping all the multiple trades. Each trade has their own issues with, you know, with supply chain and putting those pieces together. This is the third floor of the high school, future learning commons. Again, work in progress. We anticipate this done in winter of 2022 as it was originally scheduled. And again, we're constantly monitoring. There's, there's, you know, every project comes with some surprises, some changes, so adapting to that. And again, factoring in any, any issues with, with non-delivered items. So that one bathroom is complete, it's fully accessible, usable. That's actually next to the high school gym. It was a newly created bathroom. It was formerly a storage and some locker room, some, some spare lockers for some of the teams. So we lost a little, but we gained a very usable space and hit some compliance requirements that we had to.
Rob, the middle picture, is that also the third floor?
Yes, so one is, I can't define a direction, but I, when I took the two photos, one was looking one direction, one was the other.
Okay. So yeah, the one, the first one on the left is Robin Camener's area, those two classrooms, when you first come up the stairs where the gate is to go to the tower. And then the picture in the middle is the room on the other end that used to have the fire lane.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, and it's hard to.
Really cool stuff when they ripped the walls out for like old desks from the 1920s and things.
That were behind the walls.
Hidden behind the walls, yeah.
And some carved names in a rafter behind those little knee walls that were kind of cut into the, into the wood beams. So it was pretty cool.
This will be the home to the academy and the kids were actually part of the, worked with Caitlin and the architects for the design team. Students worked very hard with the teachers and architects on that design.
Yeah, it's a, it's a spectacular space. It's hard to get a sense of the scale, but if you look at that drywall pile, that's a 10-foot board. So the ceilings are, you know, just incredibly high and we're trying to preserve that as much as possible. So it'll, it'll be a great, great open space up there.
Well, and it creates, just the usability of that space becomes, you know, exponentially greater than what was the configuration before.
And part of that was the installation of the shaft for the elevator so that it becomes an ADA, an accessible space and needs code.
But even just opening the doorway between those two spaces, there's that section in the hallway, it just makes it look that much larger and bigger. It's amazing.
And those windows were not, from the inside, you couldn't see the full windows because there was wall over it. So you saw what was, what you could have thought was a much smaller window and you get these giant grand windows when we rip the walls out.
Amazing.
So here's, here's some photos of Midland. Again, they're, they're, it's not, it's not always easy to get a good shot of, of a classroom to back up, you know, in a fully set up classroom, but I was trying to capture what we're looking at are two cubby spaces, which kind of tells the whole story of a lot of the work that happened at Midland and the whole snowball effect. But those used to be storage cubbies, which were removed in order to access space to build the firewall, which then also led to an abatement because we had to abate to remove the casework to get to the asbestos to build the firewall. So, but in the end, we were kind of reevaluating and trying to build back the space, not exactly the way it was, but something that's going to give us some flexibility and also be, you know, and also look good, be functional and be complete for students to come in. So those spaces were drywalled, there's a little drop ceiling in there, so we still have access if we decide we need some kind of power or, you know, it's used in a different way that we're not aware of yet. So we have that flexibility and it's, you know, the floors continue, so it's easy to keep clean and there, there's some plans for that, for some, some carts or some furniture that could possibly be on wheels. This way it, we're not having to go into construction mode if there's a little reconfiguring that needs to be done in the future. So the music room on the left is, it also, in, it was totally reconfigured, there, there's new lighting, ceilings, ventilation that happens in the ceiling, there's, there's baseboard in the far corner that you could, that it's not, not very clear in the photo, but every mechanical system was upgraded there. So all the, all the bones behind the scenes were, were being modified, which, you know, it's hard, when you look at that, that photo, it's hard to imagine just how much, you know, how much work was achieved in those few months in the summer.
And that Midland now has fresh air coming into the building.
Yes.
Not too relaxed.
So, and you know, again, that's one other thing that where it was originally not, we weren't going to be able to make it because we needed a new transformer to, to power that system. So at the last minute, you know, right before school was open, we had to run some temporary jumpers in the, in the, the electrical room to, to get the rooftop units designed for the new ventilation system to work because that was originally scheduled for, for, for a future phase. But we were supposed to get a component from Con Ed and Hurricane Ida had different plans. But I did get some really good feedback on the music room in Midland. It was like totally dead in terms of like echoing and snapping fingers. So we had some acoustic panels that used to be there before and we were waiting and, you know, consulting with the, the teacher in there. We decided that it wasn't, it actually wasn't needed. So all, all the material choices were effective in, in making the room very usable. So a little more work in Midland, the gray box, again, work in progress where we're anticipating end of January, beginning of February, barring any, any delays beyond our control. So the photo on the right is roof dunnage, which is basically steel that's designed to support the, the rooftop units to provide ventilation. In that case, that's the, we're looking at the dunnage that is going to support the units for the air conditioning supplying the gray box. So.
Or the auditorium, as, as it was formerly known.
Right.
Very similar in Osborne, there's works in progress, some are completed. We're looking at a photo of the media center on the left. I commend the contractors, we've, we've condensed them to one part of the building. We don't have a sport, we don't have a swing space to afford to give them. So they're, they're, I guess with some careful coordination between the contractors, they're making it work. So, you know, they're, they're standing on top of piles of drywall and, you know, so the other trades can work and, and they're making it happen. So here's a, a piece in Osborne of the windows that were cut in in the gym. So that required cutting the block wall, cutting those in, those, those windows really came in at like the last minute. It was like two days before school was starting and, and we were kind of on the fence whether we tackle it. And we got some assurances from the window contractor and they made it happen. We cleaned it and it was like ready, we were actually, Eddie and his team were cleaning that, that, that gym while teachers were in setting up their classrooms. But again, now that it's complete, it's one less thing, you know, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of those decisions that you have to constantly evaluate as they come So a lot of focus has been in the media center in Osborne. So when we toured early, you could see that, you know, they were jackhammering. So I think there's, there's a little more focus now that their crews, so they're jumping back and forth so to stay out of each other's way. So I'm sure the next time I update, we'll get some much better progress photos of Osborne. But that work is underway, the floor was filled in. So I took a, I think I captured it with that, you know, a heavy piece of equipment there that's rolling around on a flat floor, which didn't exist before. That was sloped, it was filled. So, you know, it was a three-foot fill of concrete, so it's not, it was no small undertaking just to achieve that.
Thanks, Rob.
Sure.
And this is just a snapshot of the construction costs related to the phases that have already been completed or are in the process of completing. So just to remind everyone, Phase One A was the Turf Field, Midland Field, Middle School, Gymnasium lighting. Phase One was summer of 20, where we did many of the bathrooms that we started at the high school, middle school, the electrical upgrade at Osborne School. We had anticipated having more in Phase One, but ended up having to cut it down between unfavorable bidding that came back and just the unknown of COVID. We ended up delaying some of that work, which.
And if you may recall, there were restrictions on how many workers could be on site and it was very difficult to have full crews working.
Which then increased the scope in Phase Two, just by way of shuffling stuff out of Phase One into Phase Two. So none of the work was dropped, it was just reshuffled around as to the timeline in which we were going to get it done. The Phase Two numbers that you see here are essentially through what we've completed up until now. As Rob has demonstrated, there's still work going on. So these numbers are subject to change as we continue. Plus, we have, we anticipate, we had anticipated part two of Phase Two to take place over next summer. So I will continue to build on this slide as we come back and share more information with the board.
So Gabby, can I just ask?
Yeah.
It strikes me as Rob was talking and as you were talking, first of all, I love seeing zeros at the end of something to say that it's done. And that, you know, what we're seeing here in terms of where we are at the moment with Phase Two.
Yes.
It sounds like there's components that had originally been anticipated for potentially Phase Three that have been able to be accomplished in Phase Two, small pieces maybe, but, but some of that has been happening just based on, you know, like when you, when you open something up, you find that you can get to another part of your project sooner than you anticipated.
Yeah, I mean, some of what was supposed to happen in Phase Two Part Two has been now incorporated into Phase Two Part One.
Right.
But in the same token, there are some things that just now are not making sense as what would have been Phase Two Part One.
Right.
So it's getting pushed to Phase Two Part Two because of how we're touching things. So it's, it's still very much a work in progress, but to answer your question, there's a constant reevaluating as we are going into and touching things to see if we can grab additional work that maybe we thought was going to happen later, but is now coming up and making it happen systematically so that it makes sense.
Right.
You know, you can do a lot of work on paper, but until you get into the field and actually get into a situation or something comes to light, you then make those game day decisions as we're, we're in the field and adjusting for what comes up.
Well, and I think what it, what it makes me realize is that it sort of reaffirms the structure of how we are approaching this type of capital project, which is, is large in scope.
Yes.
And in order for us to have as much efficiency as possible, you know, having gone out for the bond approval with the full scope of the project.
Yes.
Instead of smaller chunks of a project, it actually allows us more efficiency and potentially savings in the long run because we are finding the opportunities at these moments.
To coordinate, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. Can you just walk me through the cash flow for the, the difference between the original construction contract, which I assume flows from the bond issuance, and the change orders? Are the change orders, are they able to be funded by the bond as well? So the bond.
Correct.
The, the original construction contract amount totaled less than 79.9?
Um.
I understand the bond is being drawn as we go along, but the, the change order.
So in, in planning for the 79.9, you allow yourself a contingency budget because you, you know that change orders are going to come as part of a project. So you may not be able to identify what those change orders are, but knowing that you're in reconstruction, there is always going to be some sort of a change that comes. So part of the budgeting process of a project of that size, you do incorporate a percentage that allows for change orders during the process of construction.
So you have the allowances, which are anticipated.
Correct.
Changes and then the change order is really this unanticipated percentage of the total project that we expect over them.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. And again, just a continuation of our last gathering when we talked about the difference between allowances and change orders. So allowances are anticipated scope, and I, I use the example all the time of asbestos removal. As you go through a project, you will automatically have asbestos removal required. So that is something that you will automatically add to your overall contract price because you know you're going to encounter that above and beyond the original scope. So that is a line item in there that's built in for additional asbestos removal that is just built in. Now, should you not need it, that ends up as a negative change order at the end of the project and that money is returned back to the school district. Whereas a change order is something that comes up in the field and the perfect example of that is the Midland firewall that we discovered wasn't completely there. And then you have to create scope or add scope to a project as a workaround to solve the problem that's now been discovered, that you wouldn't have ever anticipated would have been required.
And so for the, I, that makes a lot of sense and maybe I have access this and I haven't seen it, but the original budget for the project, just getting a sense of this 1.65 unanticipated, you know, costs that have come up, how that compares to, you know, for if we're almost halfway through the budgeted amount of the bond, but are we through half of the contingency cash flows? I'm just to get a sense of how those are building throughout the budgeting process as we go along.
So it's a hard question to answer at the moment, A, because the dust is still settling, so I, I don't know that I can answer that question fully at this moment, especially knowing that Phase Two Part Two is coming. So we are looking at what to expect from that because now we've had actually an opportunity with Phase Two Part One to get a sense of where we are, what the unanticipated stuff is and planning for what next summer would look like. I think I can answer that question a little better in another few weeks as some more of what you're seeing is coming through. But I feel comfortable and confident that we've completed a tremendous amount of work and to your point, we're about halfway through. So we're about halfway through financially as well, when, when you're looking at construction costs. So I, I think we're on track here, if that helps.
Very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think, yeah. Any other questions? Any other questions, I guess, from a financial?
I mean, I think this is very helpful to see. I know we're not done with the presentation yet, but this is very helpful to see, and it would be great to continue to see sort of this as it builds.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, as Kelsey was saying, you know, what, what strikes me is that there's going to be pieces that we thought were going to come in later phases, but maybe are going to come sooner. And I also, just thinking back to the graphic in the beginning, in the very beginning, that shows all the phases and where, where we are in those, and I, you know, I always think back to our presentation in the spring where there was so much efficiency that is gleaned from the way that, that the team has handled the design process and the filings with, with the State Education Department, anticipating ahead of time, trying to get in as many as, as we can so that, and in ways that don't hold us up.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's things, there's, that we can't control, and then there's things that we can try to work through that we can. So I think all of those efficiencies continue to help us as we, you know, in all areas, whether it's costs or timing or, you know?
Nope.
The rest of it.
The good piece about that is once you have SED approval, whether we're labels, labeling something Phase 1A or 1 or 2 or 2.7, when you're packaging it up and going out to bid and looking at your market and, and picking that opportunity, you then have the ability to package things in a certain way to try to get the best bang for your buck.
Right.
Which is, is where we were when we were putting out Phase 2 and having all of that stuff in Phase 1 that was already approved by SED, and we were able to lump it all together and get it out on the street.
Well, and, and I know, I'm personally very appreciative of that always being the top of mind of.
The team is very creative in that way.
Yes.
And, and trying to be ahead of it all.
Yeah.
So you're right. Thank you. So I think that's, oh, I forgot.
Ida.
How could I forget Ida? Sorry.
So I.
I threw you off course.
No, it's fine. I did want to put that slide in before we talked to Ida because it wasn't related.
Yes.
And I forgot that we had Ida.
Right. So I, I did feel that it was important to include this in the conversation just because it, it, it really has had an impact on, on construction. So the photos that I'm showing here are the Midland Electrical Room. This was the next morning when we went down there and saw that some of the brand-new switchgear was partially submerged. So luckily, we were able to clean it out, dry it, test it, and everything was fine. But the, the next photo is where we anticipated Con Ed dropping a transformer, which didn't come. And the week before, we had Columbus Day slated on the calendar, we got assurances from Con Ed. Gabby's befriended the contact error contact and somehow got his personal cell number, and he told us it's coming. And I, I, I think I just gave it away as a secret. The, but, you know, very responsive, and, and he was also very honest, and he said, "We lost 13 transformers to, you know, throughout the county that were damaged, and, you know, as far south as Queens and, you know, wherever they needed." So the transformer that was slated for Midland Elementary does not exist. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sure they have a schedule to rebuild their supply, we just don't know when that is. So that's one of the components that are needed to get the, the areas that are unoccupied right now, like the library and the auditorium, those units that are going to sit on that dunnage require this transformer, or you're not going to power them because they're, they're just a higher capacity, and, and the power just isn't there in the building until that comes. So these are just future conversations that are going to, you know, as we continue to update. I, I wish we had answers, but, but we don't, so. One other example, and Osborne related to the storm damage, although this, this has been resolved. The photo on the right was, the, it was the suite that was fully created, ready, it was painted, the baseboard was in, the flooring was in, then we had some water damage. It wasn't, it wasn't flooded or, you know, submerged, but there was some seepage, so we really wanted to be proactive, and, and anywhere that the water touched, we cut it, you know, two, two-foot high to kind of follow protocols there. We discovered that a lot of it was, was okay, but we went through, you know, about 15 machines drying it out for those few days, and then we had to subsequently kind of rebuild it. And it kind of broke my heart to see that because it was completed, and it was like, the paint was like just dry, and we had to rip it apart, so. Amazing. So Hurricane Ida had probably the greatest effect in the high school here. I mean, obviously, a lot of the visible damage that, you know, all the community could see, the 50 inches of, of water that was sitting on top of the turf field and all the cleaning and, and emptying the, the, the storage area below the fieldhouse, that was very visible, and I'm sure, you know, everyone could see the dumpsters as we pulled it out and salvaged what we could and cleaned everything and got that back online. The boiler room in this building took eight, eight feet of water, so a lot of equipment that, that was down there. The, the photo on the right shows brand-new boilers. Those were submerged about 30 inches high because it was in a higher part of the building that, you know, to build some resiliency, but that still took some water, so they were brand-new, not even fully installed, and, and they're, they're big paperweights. So to resolve, to resolve the lack of heat, we brought in a temporary boiler. We were actively working on, out of the three boilers out of there, one is currently functioning. So we're getting pieces and whatever we can working, and it'll be a combination of our existing boiler that we could find parts for and get working, and a temporary boiler so we have the capacity. If we were to rely just on, on assuming that we could get our three boilers working, there, there's no, there's no guarantee that would, that would have happened, so. Because we have oil-fired steam boilers, the gas equipment is totally, totally destroyed that we have to work with Con Ed to, to, to get replaced. So we weren't going to hit some of these timelines with our existing equipment, so we've brought in a temporary boiler. And it complicates things because it's in the staging area, the contractors were, again, condensed, so it made a tight space even tighter. So those are just some of the things that are happening, but I, I, you know, I commend all, all the contractors that we're working with, you know, everyone has been responsive, they, they've been flexible because they just understand, you know, we, we all have one goal, and winter's coming, and it's to get heat, so, you know, so we're, we're slowly getting those pieces online. I'm happy to say this past Saturday, our staff was in with the, the boiler mechanics, and, and we tested one, and we got some heat in the building, so, so that was, that was quite a relief to get that report. So that, that's all happening in conjunction with the construction project, so I did think it was important just to kind of update the board and let you guys know. So this hasn't changed much since the last time we met. Perhaps, Gabby, you might be able to explain a little better how, how the, how it, this falls in conjunction with what we're currently working on and evaluating.
Right. So obviously, we are anticipating the completion of Phase 2, Part 2 for next summer. The next thing on deck is Phase 2.2, which is the new additions, which we're currently in the bid evaluation process there. And then once that has been established, awarded, and launched, we will then release our design teams for what we're calling Phase 3, which is the list here that we have up on the screen. And that would be next on deck. To Rob's point, not much has changed since we've looked at this, but you can anticipate as we complete Phase 2, there will be some reevaluating of what remains identified as Phase 3.
Well, this has been a great update. I'll ask, does anyone else from the board have any comments or questions that they want to ask Gabby or Rob?
I had a quick clarification question about, I think it's Phase 2A, the portables that you just mentioned.
Yeah.
I saw the launch date is next summer, 2022. What's the estimated timing? Will that, will it just be in the summer that they work on that addition, or does that go into the school year, and will you leave the portables there as?
So the portable stay until we're completed.
It's a full year, basically.
Yeah. It, it's a full year, and we do have the ability to work on the new additions in conjunction with having school, similar to how we managed the Science Wing project, for those who remember being around for that, because you literally build a barrier between the existing building where our students live and, and work versus on the other side of that space where you have full-on construction site.
And the, the new wing doesn't go in the same location as the portable trailers.
Correct.
Those stay until we occupy the new wing. It's actually behind that area where the playground is, and then the, the playground moves up to where the portable trailers are.
That's at Osborne.
Give or take, in that general location.
For Osborne and then?
For Osborne, yeah.
Right. And then the new addition at Midland, if you're looking at Midland, is to the right of the building.
But it's further up from where the portables are.
Correct.
It's closer to Midland Avenue.
And is then, if everything goes according to plan, hopefully that new wing is available for, I guess, fall of 2023? Is that the idea?
Twenty-two.
That would be the.
Approximately.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any else? No? Okay. Well, thank you so much for this great comprehensive update. I know we'll be having plenty more as we go throughout the year. And this is, you know, such a, such a comprehensive project, and, you know, I think we're just so thrilled to have so much of this work continuing on and staying on track, and despite all of the, I don't know, parts of the universe that are trying to work against everybody these days, apparently, so. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't do this with the audit, but does anyone from the public have a question about the capital project update that they would like to ask? Okay. Great. Then we will move on to the hearing of the public, and on the agenda, it says just on non-agenda items, but I'm going to open it up to agenda items and non-agenda items, because I think there's some people who are here to comment on items that are actually on the agenda, so I didn't want to confuse anyone. So we welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. And I'm going to ask our district clerk, Lauren McGowan, who's sitting over there, to set a timer for each speaker. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel as these are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. And just as a reminder, the community may always submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. Please come forward.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Chrissy Rupp. I live at 118 Midland Avenue here in Rye. I have three kids in the district, seventh, ninth, and 11th grader. I'm here both as a parent, also a former educator, and my son's here along with many other student athletes. I don't want to take up their prize time, and I appreciate yours. It was wonderful to see what's going on with the structure of the buildings. What hit hard to me was what's going on inside and how the kids are feeling. This opt-out that has been for the juniors and seniors, only allowing certain kids to do it because they are in a sport that happens to have a boathouse in Rye, is just unacceptable. We have countless athletes who put in so many hours of dedication, who could use that ample time during PE to be given the opt-out as well. This is urgent. They are juniors, they're seniors, they're being recruited as a Rye High School person, and they're feeling really sad about the community. And it's near and dear to my heart how you're making, not you personally, but the policy and the lack of the policy with this discretion. It's a process, I understand it's a process, and I'm totally open to, you know, everybody having that time for the policy, but their time is so limited right now. So please, I beg of you to give these athletes, who are so dedicated in so many amazing sports, representing Rye here in the future at top schools with serious workloads, just give them the equal opportunity that you've given the people at Row America. That's all I ask of you. And to do it in a super timely fashion, not the policy, policy should take time, but give an immediate discretion for them, for the outside of Rye athletes. Thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Thank you.
Jennifer, we're going to discuss this policy, should we do the comments at the time we're going to discuss it, or do you want to just have, listen to everyone what they have to say? It might be more efficient if we actually discuss what we're trying to do with it.
Well, so, sorry.
It's fine. Either way, it's, it's fine.
I wanted to give the opportunity to get, let people speak a little earlier since the policy wasn't, I didn't know how long the presentations were going to be.
Do you?
And since kids have to go home and go to sleep.
No, I appreciate that. Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
You know, I, I, what I, what I think I would say is that, you know, this policy is being reviewed. There's no decision that's being made this evening at this table about the policy, so I would just say, don't fear that you're going to, that there's going to be like a final decision made.
Right.
Because it's just, we're still in the process of reviewing it. Right? I'll look to the policy chair.
Yes. I think also though, Chris, it's nice for us to be able to have a conversation, understanding the context of the people who are being impacted by the policy, so to hear the concerns that are being raised in advance of our conversation, I think is beneficial as a board, and then certainly will be as a policy committee when we look to make changes and bring things back.
Hi. My name's Lil Rupp. I'm at 118 Midland Avenue in Rye, and I'm a junior at Rye High School, and I'm speaking tonight because I'm extremely upset to understand that non-Rye-based athletic programs are not given the opportunity to opt out of gym. Other athletes, like the rowers at Row America, are given permission to opt out simply because they happen to have a boathouse here in Rye. I have nothing against rowing or Row America, and actually participated in that program a handful of years ago. I'm speaking for myself and other student athletes whose training facilities happen to be based out of the district. I train over 20 hours a week before and after school on a senior national swim team based 10 minutes away in Larchmont. We also practice and purchase. In addition to this year-round commitment, I am a valuable member on the Rye High School varsity swim team. I enjoy the team because of our school community. Coach Kelly, the head coach of the team and a former Badger swimmer and coach, can directly attest to the intense, the intensive workouts and extreme dedication and discipline Badger demands. I'm currently in the middle of the swimming recruiting process, and like many of my peers, I have a very full academic load. To be forced to walk around the track for 15 minutes while I could be studying or getting work done seems unimaginable while others are given the opt-out privilege. I find it biased and unfair to me and my fellow peer athletes in a variety of different sports. Please reconsider, reconsider the denial we have been given immediately. With the hard coursework. I find it biased and unfair to me and my fellow peer athletes in a variety of different sports. Please reconsider, reconsider the denial we have been given immediately. With the hard coursework, ACT and SAT prep, and the recruiting process, the gym time would certainly be used much more wisely to focus on my academics. Thank you for listening and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Julia Cabrera. I live at 6 Hammond Road in Rye. I'm a junior and a diver for the Marlins Dive Team at the Greenwich YMCA. There, I practice for 12 hours a week and that practice includes physical conditioning as well as time on the boards. I did participate in the high school dive team for two years, but I have decided not to continue because they do not offer three-meter diving on that team. And if I'm going to be recruited for college as a diver, it is a requirement that I can dive on the three-meter board. Also, I have a very heavy course load as someone who is taking both AP and honors classes. And it's very important to me that I can get my work done during the school day so that in the evening after practice, I can also have time to finish what I haven't yet and to prepare for my ACT exam, which is coming up very soon. And between my classes and the ACT, I need as much time as I can get during the day, which this opt-out free period would give me. I'm sure that I meet any physical requirement that you may have for opting out of gym and my coaches can provide any documentation that you may need for this. So I ask that you allow out of district sports, such as mine, to opt out of gym and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for the comments.
Hello. My name is Madison Blinoff. My address is 10 Lowen Court in Rye. I'm a junior at Rye High School and I've come to this meeting to request that the board permit the school to treat all of its student athletes with the same level of respect. Students' physical health is an important component of their overall well-being and developing a habit of exercise can lead to a lifetime of good health. Physical education is an important conduit for ensuring that students develop some of these healthy habits. Similarly, organized sport is known to have similar impact to students' well-being. As you may already know, current policy permits that student athletes engaged in a school-sponsored sport are permitted to replace their physical education class with a free period. This policy is a sound one. It acknowledges that student athletes meet certain levels of physical activity and general health while providing an opportunity for them to recover some of the time lost to practices and games and apply it to schoolwork. The current policy does not extend the same benefits to students who engage in sports outside of the school system despite levels of activity that are similar or potentially even more demanding. There are many students that, like myself, dance and compete with one of the local dance studios, practice and compete in martial arts or boxing in a local gym or dive. These sports all require the same time commitments and physical health as any of the sports offered by the school. I dance with the New York Performing Arts Center, which is a registered and reputable dance school with qualified teachers. I represent them on a competition team and have rehearsal 10 and 1/2 hours per week and sometimes more. We do a variety of exercises in class, practicing strength, flexibility, and endurance, and we learn how to work as a team. These physical demands far exceed any benefit from a game of pickleball, a 45-minute walk around the track, or a trip to Jerry's, as we do in gym. As my fellow students can attest, junior year of high school sees a significant increase in the student workload compared to prior years. It would be more than helpful to have an extra hour once or twice per week to focus on a great amount of schoolwork and SAT preparation. During this free period, students like me can complete homework and study for tests, allowing me to be more productive with my time during the school day. I know many of my peers who participate in non-school sports that would agree. Surely, surely the school and board can implement a more thoughtful policy that balances the needs to meet state and federal guidelines on students' physical activity with practical policies focused on confirmation and validation. If the board is willing to consider this request, I would like to volunteer my time to help create the necessary guidelines. Overall, I hope you take this message into consideration and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ben. I live over on 10 Bradford Avenue. I'm a junior and a keen and nationally-ranked competitive cyclist. I'll keep my answer and statement brief by agreeing with what the others have said before me. It is unfortunate and indeed unfair that the current framework for opting out of gym only allows for a select type of student to meet the criteria. I have hopes, then, that we can implement a system that enables any dedicated athlete to enjoy the privilege of an extra hour to use as additional time for schoolwork. This junior year, as is well-known, for its academ, for its amount of academic work and the additional stresses that come from things like prepping for, you know, exams, APs, driving, all that, so, which all make an extra hour in the school day not only valuable but almost a necessity and a welcome relief to all those who need it but have previously been denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Lee Sanford. I live at 25 Hillside Place in Rye. I'm actually going to read something from my daughter, who's a dancer at Bravodance. She can't be here because she's at dance. She doesn't have much spare time. She says, "Hi, I'm Chrissy Sanford. I'm a junior at Rye High School and a competitive dancer at Bravodance Center in Rye. I think that students, including me, who participate in sports outside of school, which are not provided by the school, should be qualified to opt out of gym. Junior and senior year are known to be the most overloaded, stressful years of high school, which is presumably why opting out of gym is an option. I dance approximately 16 hours per week all year long and more in the competitive season. Most days after school, I leave my house around 4:00, sometimes not getting home until 10:00, which is when I end up doing my homework. Junior year is arguably the most important year of high school because students are trying to prove themselves through their grades on top of ACT, SET stress. I work out more than enough hours per week through dance and I would benefit greatly from gaining an extra hour during the school day when I would normally have gym." Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. So I'm not going to talk about sports, talking about something different. So, and given...
Claudia, will you just tell us who you are?
Oh, sorry. I assumed you guys knew who I was.
Just for the record.
Claudia Hanley, 61 Glendale Road in Rye. I'm a parent of two girls, sixth and second grader. I'm also a co-president of RACE. So given how, how Dr. Byrne mentioned in his weekly report the other day about the Haskins Institute, I figured it was a nice time to come up here and say thank you to you all. I'm here tonight to say thank you to the Board of Ed, Dr. Byrne, and the administration for the steps that you've taken over the last two years towards educating our struggling learners. As a parent of a child with a language-based learning disability, the partnership with Haskins Laboratories and the implementation of the Universal Screener is not only exciting but necessary. Like many other parents in Rye, my oldest daughter left the district four years ago for the third grade to attend a private school so that she can learn to read. These sources, resources will help identify our struggling learners at an early age and allow for the proper interventions to be put in place so that all Rye students can become great readers. The collaboration with Haskins and the use of the Universal Screener are just the beginning steps and I, as well as I'm sure the rest of the Rye community, are very excited and eager to hear about what else lies ahead. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. And they say this is a thankless job. I disagree. It's so nice to hear good things. And thank you, Dr. Byrne, for that, for the focus on the, on the program. It's been great to hear about that one as it's developed.
Okay. I think that concludes our public comment period. Thank you all for coming to speak. Oh, and there's our bell. Thank you, Ms. McGowan.
I just did want to say, having listened to that, really appreciate all the comments from the students who came. I can tell you, as a father of an eight, six, and four-year-old, I only hope that when my children are juniors in high school, they show the same dedication and focus that all of you are. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks for coming out. We do love to hear the feedback and it's great to have everyone come out and do it. So, thank you. It's tough, you can't see me smiling under the mask.
And, and as the Chair of the Policy Committee, I appreciate all of your feedback and it will most certainly be taken into consideration as we go forward, reflecting in this policy and looking to make changes. So thank you. Okay. So moving on to the consent agenda, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein. So I'm just going to take a moment to go through and see if anyone has any comments or questions on any of the sections of the consent agenda. So we have consent agenda general, consent agenda fiscal construction.
Can we just, yep. Thank you. Just a brief explanation on the change orders, just at the middle school, high school, there was about 300,000. I'm sure it probably has to do with this new boiler truck or something. That would be helpful.
So my trustee director of facilities is here?
He's running away, though. No, kidding.
So, is there a specific item to clarify?
I get, I'm just, well, maybe the bulkiest one. So at the, at the middle school, high school, there's the G's. It came to 300,000 total. I guess they're all disconnected. So maybe we'll start with the $87,000 one, just talking through. This would be the, oh, abatement of plaster wall ceilings, 1,500 square feet. So I guess they're all unconnected. I didn't know if you had a...
Sure. There, there is a few that, that certainly come to mind. One you mentioned goes into the allowance. I know we talked about that before. That, that is one of, you know, asbestos is always something that is, it's hard to define the entire scope until you actually open walls. Sometimes you have to plan a duct route or pipe route and you encounter it and there were, there were numerous places like that that, and again, each new space is handled with a new containment, new air monitoring, new testing. So even though it could be in, in the same room, it has to be tented off and contained and, and that's why, that's one of the items that there really aren't many economies of scale unless it's in the same, you know, literally in the same space. There were, there were some structural changes, some that had to be incorporated. Again, some of it discovered as we're building the elevator shaft. There are some changes related to that. There's some drainage issues in front of the middle school. I'm just trying to think of some of the larger ticket items. Again, each one is not, when it's encountered, it convenes a little meaning. We kind of look at, you know, what happened, you know, how we got there. And that's not a conversation that ends, I think, as we, we get towards future phases, we're looking at that as, as, you know, kind of learning lessons. What could we have probed more to avoid it? Some of the changes we, the, this wall right out, right outside the NPR was a stone wall that was deconstructed and rebuilt with the same stone. When that came down, although we probed in multiple areas, there was a significant amount of rot in the studs behind the sheeting. So we had to remove the sheeting, remove the studs, re-insulate, well, rebuild the studs, re-insulate, and it's all built, rebuilt with newer products. So we're not doing this again. So there's like a liquid applied vapor barrier and, and different, you know, products that are available that weren't available 30 years ago. So that, that, that's an example of a change order. But again, each one is, is visited, it's evaluated to see if there's multiple options. Multiple options are presented to us and, and, you know, it's weighed against initial cost, timing, durability, and, you know, some, in, in some cases, it, we could adjust so we end up with a better long-term product. Sometimes it's unfortunate, but it's just an expense, right? Like, like additional abatement that no, if it didn't, you know, if you're running a duct and you didn't run into it, that cost just wouldn't be there and sometimes it's just the same cost.
Yeah. No, it's, it's really helpful for me to hear just the examples. You know, just thinking through, it is such a large project and just understand the accumulation of these as we continue through the project, just making sure they remain on track to ensure that contingency budget that was created. Because they're just, each, each, each two weeks, they're, it's building. And so just getting a sense of the, as we continue to manage to the end of the bond, making sure that we don't hit a point where we're having to maybe give up doing something because now we've created so many change orders along the way to adapt. But some of them obviously cannot be avoided, which I understand, but that's why I, I'm just, for my sense of how, how the process is to decide we're going to do this versus is there another way to patch it as opposed to fix it.
Right. So we, we don't just roll over. Yeah, we'll say that. You know, it, it, it's evaluated and sometimes it's kind of, you know, different trades coming together and the engineer is kind of scratching their heads and saying, you know, is this, you know, is there another way to do it? And, and again, sometimes there is, sometimes there, sometimes there, there isn't. There are, there's one that comes to mind where we did additional flooring in Osborne that, that really was addition to scope, but it really just made sense to do it now because we were, we were prepping the floor. It's connected to the lobby and you'd have this little island of undone flooring. And to do that again in the future would be so much costlier. So that, that, that comes into the evaluation too, although like, we're not really ready to do it, we can live with this, we're going to pay, you know, pay now or pay much more later. So those are some of the decisions that are...
I think that's great. I think that the idea is it's, it's very hard to keep, we see change orders every two weeks. It's hard to keep a running total in your head and saying, where does that fall in the contingency budget? Where are we? Are we going to stay on track? So I don't know if there's any way around that. We've done this before, but it's, you know, it's challenging. Other than, you know, the budget you put up today, that kind of just said, this is where we are so far. It's fine. It's a little more discreet. I think there's like, it's kind of like a gap between like seeing them every week and then, and then where we are in total. I don't know if there's a way to...
I'm, I mean, we, we are, we keep a change order log. I don't know if that's maybe not waiting until a presentation evening that maybe we incorporate, maybe an information...
Maybe adding it with the change orders and they, or just having it presented along with...
Or maybe just an information item with each, with each agenda that just has the running total for each area.
If that's not a lot of work, that would be, I think, helpful.
No, I think I can figure out a way to incorporate that.
Yeah, if you're already tracking it in some way total, it'd be nice to see it. But, yeah.
Well, and I think that's sort of like what we, what that slide...
Right.
That had the, where we are to date. I think seeing that on a more regular basis just gives a little more context to what we're seeing as, as these come up and then end up on the agenda for approval.
And I think it's, it's also important to remember that there's so much exploratory work that you can do in advance that then tips the scale of doing so much exploratory work for work that's potentially never going to happen because we can't, we just know that we can't absorb that size scope. And remembering that these are buildings that are, are old and need some love and with the best of intentions as we go into these projects, it is very difficult when you come across a situation to say that we shouldn't address it today or maybe put a patch on it, to hold off maybe five years from now or when we revisit it, when we really don't have that opportunity as often as we all would like to be able to go back. I spend a lot of time struggling with that myself and really don't want to leave something undone that I believe that, because half the battle is you've got the workforce here, you've got it open, you've got the resources. And I understand from the community's perspective, when you're seeing these change orders coming through, you're, you're scratching your head like, well, how and why is it...
to what we're seeing as these come up and then end up on the agenda for approval.
And I think it's also important to remember that there's so much exploratory work that you can do in advance that then tips the scale of doing so much exploratory work for work that's potentially never going to happen because we just know that we can't absorb that size scope. And remembering that these are buildings that are old and need some love and with the best of intentions as we go into these projects. It is very difficult when you come across a situation to say that we shouldn't address it today or maybe put a patch on it, to hold off maybe five years from now or when we revisit it, when we really don't have that opportunity as often as we all would like to be able to go back. I spend a lot of time struggling with that myself and really don't want to leave something undone that I believe that, because half the battle is you've got the workforce here, you've got it open, you've got the resources. And I understand from the community's perspective, when you're seeing these change orders coming through, you're scratching your head like, well, how and why is it this amount of money? But it really is a game decision at that moment to say, we've got to address this now, even though it wasn't something we anticipated because I don't want to leave anything unturned or unaddressed as we move forward.
Well, I think that's kind of how we got here to begin.
Well...
Yeah.
That's why the bond, it was.
I didn't want to say that, but you're right.
But I was just going to say, I think it goes back to Kelsey's, you know, part of her staging for the question, which was really just making sure, in being reassured that in fact, these changes that are necessary, that are practical, that are completely unanticipated until the wall gets open, that they then don't diminish from the larger work that was proposed to the community and put forth as the work that would be done. And so, I think anytime that we can have an opportunity to reassure people that yes, we have to fix that wall at Osborne because it's shaking the whole building, and if we don't fix it, it's not going to keep the rest of the building standing. But don't worry, by doing that, we're still going to be able to provide the state-of-the-art media center and maker space that we had proposed and promised to deliver. And I think it's just that reassurance for people that helps.
Yeah, I think part of it's just the communication. You guys live and breathe this every day.
Right.
And you've been really good on our tour. We did one tonight explaining how something pops up and like, hey, we opened this wall, we learned this. The absolute right thing was to do is fix it this way, X, Y, Z, we get it, and then you're going to see a change order. It's just in how the gap in communication from you living it to us seeing it discreetly and then being, explain it, you know, to the public and so they can see it. That's just the challenge. It's hard. And I don't, what the last thing I want to do is burden you with having to create more reports to tell us. So, it's just how can we think about ways to efficiently keep everyone up to speed? I think that's kind of capturing everything.
Agreed. Great. Understood. You're welcome.
And I'll say on camera and publicly, as we go through our tours and we hear what everyone and how everyone is involved, I have more and more confidence that everything that's being done is being done not only because it needs to, but because, like what you just said, Rob, which was do it, we discover something, do it now. Because if we wait and patch it and do it in five years, it's going to cost us five times as much. So, I mean, it's great to hear all that stuff. I just want to let the whole world know in some way, you know, keep that communication going.
Sure. I mean, it's also been, you know, made very clear to me that there is an opportunity cost if, you know, if they're not on check.
Right.
You know, to give the assurances, there's many times that we actually move away from a suggestion as well. So, I could give one example at Osborne where part of the original scope was to fix this drain line that always kind of bubbled up right in the front of the building that was now, that is currently now enclosed and it's part of the secure vestibule. So, the, as we, and there was a certain amount of pipe that needed to be replaced. So, it, when we started to open it up and investigate, we actually had to get a camera. We went about 450 feet into, towards Osborne Road, and we actually didn't know where it ended up. The solution we came up with was to, we put a catch basin. So, if you see the tree right by the entrance of the ADA ramp, there's a catch basin there, which our solution was to get the pipe past the building. Let's do the sidewalk. Let's get the building safe. We have this catch basin. We connected the brand-new pipe to this old connection where, where we, you know, it's been draining. We don't know exactly where it goes, but it got us to a point where we can revisit it without additional costs. So, if we have to build from that point, and there's a future pipe repair that we have to dig up the sidewalk, we can do that. And the suggestion at the time is let's just fix it. Let's just cut the sidewalk. And I said, we, you know, we talked about, we're not ripping more up. You know, we could get it to this point. So, there's a lot of those decisions, too, that if we just kind of said, all right, you know, I'll take your, you know, take your advice, and we just do it now, you know, this is from the contract, from everyone just, you know, putting their heads together, it would be even greater. So, you know, I could also kind of track those things that we avoid doing, too, to, you know, to provide those assurances.
And Chris, building on your comment, we will be offering tours to the community when we get to the point of substantial completion and the doors are in.
Yeah.
The things that you saw tonight, we're still waiting on, that are in the shipping process, whatever, I don't even know if you can call it that, but the travel process to get to us.
No, I appreciate that.
I would say, I don't want to add another report. You know, I don't think telling us what you didn't do, but that story was so helpful for me to think about your process. And I think the anecdotes, as Chris said, I think going through the tour, you know, looking at all these, I don't know what all the change orders mean, but I know there was a lot of thought and time put into making, you know, a reason why we are doing them. And tonight's presentation from Gabby was so helpful to bring us, you know, to kind of where we are overall. But I think finding a way to have a better, ongoing dialogue, you know, versus just these attachments where it is hard to contextualize it in a way that doesn't burden you too much administratively. We definitely don't want to see everything you didn't do. I know you, every day you're probably screening, you know, doing a great decision tree. But it's really just that bigger picture and making sure we're on track to kind of, from a financial perspective, complete everything that we promised the community.
Great.
Okay, Consent Agenda Fiscal. Comments, questions? It's the audit.
What is, so what's the vision therapy?
It's services required for individual students because of IEP-driven services or translation services with interpretation for different languages.
Cool. And then, I probably should know this one, but the Mangum Sports at Osborne, what is that?
Those are the lunch supervision and the recess supervision group that the PTO...
Got it. I just didn't know that was their name. Okay, cool.
And I'll just add that 10.06 were the helmets for modified, for the eighth-grade modified football team that were lent to us by our friends in Millbrook that are now being used by our students, so.
Yes, a huge thank you to the administration for turning over every rock to help figure that out. It was clearly a lot of effort for an unanticipated turn of events there. So, I did have one quick question just on transportation contracts. I mean, I'm assuming the single bid, I saw the attachment, we didn't get bids from companies because of the bus driver shortage, question mark? So, there was an attachment of the three bids for all the transportation contracts, and they all had just one bid.
Right. So, unfortunately, as a result of COVID, well, even before COVID, we have a very specialized, specific transportation need for many of our routes. So, oftentimes you will not see multiple bids on our routes, whether it's accommodations or limitations to the amount of time that a route can be. We typically deal with no more than three transportation companies that service our district as a result. So, it is typical to receive no more than two bids at a time on any particular route.
It's also districts that are running much larger transportation operations are getting the most interest from the vendors as opposed to us with the smaller operations.
And then, is the pricing a lot more than last year? For, I mean, for these, do you have a sense, or is it...
No, I mean, there's nothing that came in that's unusual that wasn't anticipated or expected.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Consent Agenda Professional Appointments, Classified Appointments, and Special Education. Okay, seeing no more...
What is a classified appointment versus a professional appointment?
It just depends on, it's, sorry.
Certificated employees versus classified employees, usually civil services, what that's referring to.
Cool.
Thank you, Brian.
Crushed it.
Okay, so, then can I have a final vote on the consent agenda? Six yeses and one abstention because we have one, well, one not here. Sorry, one not here, not abstention. One absent is what I really meant to say.
Six L's.
And then, I know we already sort of pointed this out, but we want to, we want to thank the PTO at Osborne School for the very generous donation for the recess program through Mangum Sports of $20,000 as part of our consent agenda. And of course, the helmets from Millbrook.
Thank you, Millbrook.
Okay, so, moving on to Information and Discussion, we have several policies to look at and talk about.
We do. We do indeed.
So, I will turn that to you.
Thank you, Rob.
Oh, yes, thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah, Rob.
We're just, let's start with the least complicated first. It's, I just get the easy, get the things out of the way that we know. So, if we look at Policy 5425, that's student concussions and head injuries. This...
I'm against them.
Well, okay, then. We've got a sway, we've got a new concussion protocol system that the district will be using. It is called Sway. It is a portable system that is used on a cell phone, which allows the district to be able to be onsite and at the time of injury to be able to make their evaluation of a concussion as a result. So, that is the, you'll see the language here that we moved to with the Sway system. Additionally, it's, the change in this policy is reflecting with the concussion management team that those that were listed as members of the concussion management team in the policy were the same staff that were listed in the regulation. That was not the case. So, now they mirror each other. So, those that are listed on the concussion management team in the policy are in fact, those same individuals that are part of the regulation. And then, if we go to the regulation, which would be 5425R, again, you'll see the update in the concussion management team. So, that again, is a direct reflection. One of the things that we just, it's a semantics, but where it says new student should return to play and then inference is the description of what play is considered. So, that is sports, PE class, or recess. So, that's really just kind of an idea. There's also a change from seven days to 48 hours. 48 hours is more towards, it matches the number of days, but 48 hours increases the time. So, if you look at your steps and you consider each step that a student athlete must go, move through to be released from the concussion protocol, it is reflective of seven days, but it is 48 hours. So, a student would first have to have light aerobic activity. And then, the next day, they would move to initiating an aerobic activity and so on and so forth as the steps are listed. Questions related to the policy and regulation?
No.
Jen, any questions?
Sorry, I lost my internet connection. So, I've been listening.
Yeah, so did I.
You can cheer. That's what we can do.
I was listening, but I couldn't follow along.
Did you?
So, there's the...
I think it's, I mean, it sounds like we're just making consistent, making it more consistent with what...
Yes, the changes are consistent, and then we're also updating the policy with our new program that the district is using.
Right.
Okay, if there are any additions or corrections, please let me know. We will be bringing this policy again then forward for a second reading at our next meeting, which will be on October 26th. Now, we can talk about Policy 5280.1, Athletics and Physical Education Opt-Out. This policy was being brought forward this evening in a, this policy was being brought forward prior to any discussion or outreach from student athletes or their families. The presented change was to move the language from semester to season. That, as you will see, was the only change that was being made. However, we clearly heard this evening from student athletes and families about the policy and how unfortunately, some are seeing it as being harmful to them. And certainly, I know as a board of education, as a body and as a district, that is never something that we are looking to do and trying to make sure that we meet our kids and our students where they are and how we can help them move forward. We were fortunate enough that Susan was on our agenda to come to discuss a different policy. But just so happens, she's here, so we can certainly talk about this policy. What I will say as a matter of procedure, my thinking is that certainly, the conversation we have here and then the feedback that we've heard from our student athletes and our families tonight will be taken back to our policy meeting, which just so happens to be scheduled for October 20th, which then will also be able to allow us to stay on a schedule to bring it back to the full board for our next meeting on October 26th. So, while there was a concern that was raised regarding sense of timeliness, we can say again, how fortuitous of us that this just happens to be happening all at a time where things have lined up and we don't have to create things to make things happen.
Great. Well, I mean, I'll say, just to, for clarity on the issue from tonight brought up by the parents and the students, nothing needs to change in the policy for us to approve out-of-district students for opt-out. Our policy currently allows that. And it is clearly, you know, out-of-district athletes and superintendent at his or her discretion may approve for physical education credit on a pass/fail basis out of school, physical, or athletic programs that has been approved in consultation with the Director of Physical Education, Health and Athletics. So, for tonight's issue, or the parent issue, we need to figure out where we want to go. And with that piece of it, we don't actually need to change the policy at all to do things. Why don't we start with the change, because it's really small? Going from semester to season, and looking at the regs, Reg 135.4, and thank you again to Kelsey for helping me find the right piece of it, seems to reference everything in terms of semesters. So, I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out why we are going to switch to a season when we got to follow the regs.
So, an example that I...
Susan, can you turn on your microphone?
Oh, sorry.
What I could see coming in was seasons. A student must be in a physical education class if they're not in sport, obviously. So, looking at sports and how they function, for example, tennis is over as of today if you're not qualifying for states. So, technically, they'd be out for the entire semester, and they're not participating anymore. That obviously being an in-house, interscholastic sport through NISPA. My understanding, and again, I didn't experience this because it was pre-COVID before I started, that some students, when they chose, for example, hockey and basketball, can go into March, but it was extended through the semester. And then, also on the spring side of things. So, we had students, my understanding, participating in in-district opt-out, and we're not actually in the sport anymore.
Right.
So, season, what makes sense with that is it's very clear, it's defined by NISPA. And since we're allowing the in-district opt-out, it's just, it's very manageable for the kids and students to head back to class once their season ends.
That makes sense.
And how does that work if, let's say, their tennis season is over and they go back into gym? Is it graded on a pass/fail basis for junior and senior year?
So, well, with the out-of-district, it is, they do receive a grade with their, when they come back into class. So, I'm sorry, if you can hear me, I'm not talking into this. They are given a grade for the time that they're there. So, for example, last year, when we did this, when the student returned, they were assessed on the time that they were there as well. Okay.
We, I guess the one thing that I would, where I think this then potentially ties in with the broad, with the others you were going to discuss is, you know, there's, there's kids who are in your season for the school. We all know that certain kids in certain sports, you're going to be training outside of the season and aspects like that, as well as, you know, sort of if there's, if there's a sense of feedback from the parents and the communities in terms of, well, it's always been this way and that's worked versus now. Again, I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying as a fact-based question, I understand the logic of that. I could also see it possibly just turning into, now we're going to have even more exception requests for the people who are like, well, normally I did, but you know, now I'm out of football, but I'm going to continue my private training at 15 hours a week and stuff like that, which they didn't have to make a request for because it was semester. So, I'm not opining one way or the other, but it seems like this edit may also be tied to, as we make a broad decision about how do we want to encompass this whole thing, whether we adjust a policy or not. Because I agree with Chris, we may not actually need to change the policy itself, but we probably need...
Or kind of implementation.
An implementation.
So, so...
We may want to change the policy.
We may want to. I'm up for all.
We will need to change the policy if we...
We will need to change the policy if we, in fact, go ahead and, and make a regulation, because we will need to make reference of a regulation within our policy. So if we set up some sort of parameters around how this policy gets implemented, we are going to have to add that language in here as a reference. So it's a minor change, it is not one of substance, but it is rather one of business and something that's going to have to happen anyway.
Right.
So, but going back to your earlier point, Tom, that you raised about a season, you know, for certain, for something like dance, so we had two people who come to speak to dance. Dance, in terms of a season, from my understanding of friends who participate in those things, that is a season that really does run from October through June. And so then, how would those determinations be made, something like badger swimming? Those, that season, right, their competitions, their meets year-round. So how does that then, how would that also be balanced, would be a question I would have in terms of a regulation about how we make that determination?
Sure. And I would assume that it would be start and stop date, so if it is continuous and progressive through the year, then that's something that you would have to take into account when you're doing the implementation component of it.
But I guess my question that I would have is, and tied to what we heard tonight, what's changed, what's different, what, why was this, or maybe it was an issue in past years, I don't know, but why was this not a prior issue that now is suddenly an urgent issue? What's-
I'll say, one of, one of the reasons that it's changed is, when Susan came into the district, we asked her to look at all of the different practices and procedures within the athletics and physical education health programming, and make recommendations for improvement. So I would say that our previous approach to opt-out was really sort of a free-for-all.
Yeah.
And with little to no documentation, no clear understanding of where things were happening, and, and so, part of her charge from me was, we need to take a look at all these different practices and figure out the right way of work for improving.
Yeah, I'll give you a little, a little history on it. When we first talked about this and put it in place, you know, the situation is the same, we have kids who do, do things out of district that are, you know, remarkably rigorous, and we wanted to provide the same opportunity for opt-outs as kids in district. It's something we felt strongly about. The goal was to, whatever implementation, whatever evidence needed to be provided to, to give the district comfort, that it was good, that it would qualify. And I think what we were learning is that even that question was a little more nebulous than we thought, was that this, the burden would be on the student to provide the evidence that whatever program they're doing was going to meet our requirements. And I think what we learned when Susan got here is that there was a hell of a lot going on within the athletic office, that there was a lot of burden of these guys doing paperwork and, and trying to track all this stuff that put an overburden on them. So the, we've, we didn't change the policy, but we have changed the implementation, and now saying no to a lot of out-of-district students that in the past would have gotten a yes, just rubber stamped and gone out. So what we're trying to figure, I think where the conversation needs to go is to, is to where do we get an implementation that there is, that A, we're making sure everything is, that we're hitting all our marks, whatever those marks may be, and that's kind of some of the stuff we're working through right now, and, and get to a point where we can do it, but not have an overabundance of, of work, either on Susan, the athletic department, or Dr. Burnin as a superintendent doing these approvals. So, you know, you know, in some of the conversations we had, emails earlier in the year, like, where did this come from, what were we doing, you know, the, the questions came up, whereas liability, does the district incur any kind of liability for students who are participating in out-of-district programs that we are now taking on as our own? And I think that we may have had greater fear to that, we recently had communication with our, with our attorneys, that it doesn't look like we should, and they haven't signed off on this entirely yet, but it didn't feel like, they couldn't, neither, neither of our attorneys could identify increased liability because we're students for out-of-district. Now, the question around curriculum is, the curriculum in athletics has changed, we may have more things we need to prove are being done. So what do we need to do that we're making sure that we're doing that? The same thing for in-district opt-outs as out-of-district opt-outs. And then how do we make implementation easy, easier, so that we can, so that we can, if we choose to keep this policy in place, that we're not overburdening the athletic department or administration to get there? I think that's the, kind of where we are.
I think the question of curriculum is an important one, and especially in hearing a lot of the content that was shared from the student athletes themselves about this sense of pressure, a lot of stress, a lot of un, a lot of restriction on time, personal time, to be able to feel like they can get things done, manage their many competing, oh, what's that, there we go, that's the word, thank you, their obligations. And I know that there has been a, a move in the health curriculum in particular, to try to incorporate more things related to student well-being in a, in terms of a mental, so it's not just related to physical well-being. And so I think that's something that we need to have a robust understanding of, because I would really hate for students to be in situations that are extremely stressful and missing opportunities that we, as a district, have determined are really helpful for our kids and their mental wellness, because I'll say it, as I say it every time I get a chance, if a child, if a student is not able to mentally engage in their work, it doesn't matter how great our curriculum is, they will never reach their full potential. And so I would, we, I feel as a district, would be doing a great disservice to our students if we said, okay, you can opt-out, which means you're not going to get access to some of this mental health curriculum. And so I would appreciate hearing from Tricia and from Susan where we are kind of on that continuum at this point, for those, for our students at that level.
Sure. And I don't want to put Tricia's new to our district, so I'm sure that it's very new to her too, as I stepped in. The work between the department, specifically in the secondary level, the high school, Rob and Camener as our health educator, and our physical education teachers continue to work. I saw from my own eyes last year, some of the units that we worked on that dealt with stress management and mental health pieces. For example, many of our warm-up activities, while you may be engaged in a physical component at some point, are yoga-based and deal with stress management, and the different components that are offered through that activity in itself. It's, it's a different shift, most definitely. We most recently were able to schedule PE for freshmen separately. We have short and long-term goals, and some of the goals we have are to look at doing something called a senior experience, as opposed to maybe an opt-out opportunity for students that, to take advantage of regardless of what they're doing. Another goal was to provide more electives, so that students have opportunities in different content area. One of the things we're required to do is hands-only CPR. Why not teach the components of a CPR class if that's something that helps a student as they progress? We've talked about with Rob and collaborating with her in our classes, doing focused on nutrition, almost using health as a, health as the educational component, and collaboration with PE for the, the science lab, if you will, for the lack of a better term, is, is how I look at it. I taught health and physical education, I was able to teach both to the same students, and it was really neat, and you can get creative with scheduling with that piece. So, you know, again, while this is only my second year, I can see the strides, and I know that the staff is very eager to keep making those strides as we move forward. You know, they, I love walking down and, and being a part of the classroom, to see the kids engaged in different pieces, because physical education isn't just about sport, and, you know, that big picture, I, I think sometimes they enjoy it, and, and our kids can be overscheduled and have a lot of great opportunities, but I worry about that at times. Sometimes just to debrief and just step back and reflect can be really helpful.
So for the immediate, we're talking about our juniors and seniors, our 11th and 12th graders.
Yeah.
What curriculum are the opt-outs missing? In district or out-of-district, it doesn't matter, yeah.
Right. So, yeah, it would totally depend on, obviously, when they're going in and out, because curriculum's fluid, and it's dependent on weather and everything else that we're going through. So just, it would totally depend on whether they're a fall athlete, for example, tennis coming back after today, whereas our longest sport could be football that participates till December 5th, that goes right over winter season. So I think there's, could be pieces anyone can miss, whether they're in or out. I think, again, going back to the implementation piece is the biggest piece, because as the Director of PE, obviously, and Dr. Burnin and I, we want to also make sure and we ensure activities are appropriate for students as well, and that, you know, we think about all the different pieces here that we approve, coaches and teachers with all these certifications, and I just want to make sure that when we talk about implementation, that we are, you know, cognizant of that.
Yeah. No, I, I think, I was very appreciative of that, of that piece of it. And I think where I came back on it and thought about it is that these programs that are the out-of-district kids-
Yeah.
They're doing them anyway.
Yeah.
Whether, whether they have to sit in a gym class-
Right.
It doesn't change what they're exposed to on the outside. So the, that piece, I'm still kind of, like, I don't, I'm not sure where that, what that puts on us.
Sure.
What I am concerned about would be what they'd be missing-
Sure.
-from being in, in class.
Right.
And I'm, I've got that concern for, for both the in-district and out-of-districts.
I do too, yeah.
So it seemed, but I, yeah, I understand the, the concern, but I don't know what it changes. You know, whether we approve or go through the effort of making sure the coaches in the outs, in these outside programs have somewhere the level of certification is nice, but it doesn't change anything for the-
Right.
-what the kids are being exposed to. It actually doesn't do anything for us, or then, in the, in the, in the context of the opt-out.
Yeah, and I think to, to bring it to what we, I heard tonight, and a lot, I mean, much of it, if not really, was, was our disparate treatment.
Yeah.
And, you know, and so it's an issue of, if we just, if, if the view is, is, hey, it doesn't matter whether you're taking rye varsity football, or doing a dance class, or doing a cycling class somewhere else, we think you need X, and we're gonna, you're gonna have it, and there's no opt-out, that's one thing. If we say, well, you get to opt-out because you're in this sport, but this sport's not, that, that needs to be justified.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, it's obviously the question of the burden and the administration and all those things, but, I mean, the kids we heard from tonight are sort of sitting there saying, like, why am I different?
Yeah, I think, I think the overwhelming-
That's an issue.
Yeah, the overwhelming theme felt like consistency.
Yeah.
We need to look at where the, where we can make it more consistent across the board. And I, I feel like, well, I think this is a great discussion, I think there's a few things that have to get hashed through from both the administrative side and then in the policy committee to kind of figure out how, how this could roll out. I think, you know, I mean, it was incredibly important and beneficial to hear from the students and their parents about what they were experiencing, and, you know, I think that, that at this point, it feels to me like it, we're, we have a lot of more questions than we have answers that we can get to at this moment, so it might be worthwhile sending this back.
Well, but I, I push back on that for a minute, actually, because, you know, I think that it is very clear that there's some policy determinations that need some thought and some process, and need to be layered out over time. The fact is, right now, if you are in X, you get to opt-out, and if you're in Y, you don't, and apparently, Y is different than it used to be. And we've got some kids who are coming here expressing, you know, immediacy. We can make out the determinations about, about that, but they're, they, they took the time they came here. I think there's the possibility of addressing that immediacy and the disparate thing, while then taking the time to craft-
Well, yeah, I agree.
-a proper policy over time.
Right. I mean, the questions around curriculum and what we want to deliver in the PE class, that's for everybody, and that's a longer-term figure. I agree with you, there isn't an immediate question of how we're treating the kids differently. And, and is there something in implementation that is, that is really in our way of saying yes to the diver, or the cyclist, and the kids in out-of-program that, that we can't get to that map? Is there, is there something we can do to help you? That, that, what's the burden that's in the way?
I, I think, because I haven't experienced it completely, but what I can see in my notes, and what I did see, things that were inappropriate to approve, in my opinion, is the Director of PE, and I didn't feel comfortable, for example, training, personal training with your, you know, somebody you know, or walking, or things that weren't tied to any instructor or certification, and I just would have concerns of what that is doing.
It would seem to me that, you know, it, it would be, the, the direction that I think we, we would have to head in is coming up with clear criteria-
Correct.
-that's applied across the board. So that there's required documentation, that it's, you know, with an organization, or a team, or a real place that can be verified, where we have to have verification from that organization and the coach involved, and then there would be a process of submitting the approvals in advance with detail, and hours, and, and activities, and what's going to be covered that connects to the curriculum that will be missed, and then that there's documentation at the end, that the, the person who has run the program and submitted the initial application on behalf of the student, or the student would be submitting it with their verification, that would have to be completed before a pass is put in for the course. And, you know, that, that's going to be a burden on the students, but I think it would be, in, in the interest of fairness, would be something that would have to happen across the board.
Right. And I think that's something that we cannot come up with this moment, this evening, and given the timeline that Jane laid out, we're talking a couple more weeks.
Right. I, what I would, my suggestion would be at this time, because we had a fair number of students here who came before us, but they're not the only students, right, who were impacted by this policy. So for us to just say, broad brush for these students who are here, you are now free, you've been, I think we need to be thoughtful and deliberate, and I would make the recommendation that, from what I'm hearing, and I certainly want to make sure I'm not mishearing what is being shared by the board tonight, is that the board is interested in creating a regulation, procedural regulation around the implementation of the policy, in particular, the opt-out provision, that then the policy committee, which is scheduled to meet on the 20th, will go ahead, review, create, draft, to then bring back to the full board on the 26th for approval, with the understanding that this regulation is a regulation for now, with the full reflection of how the curriculum may or may not impact the necessity of an opt-out going forward, but for this period in time, right now, until we get to further conversations related to curriculum impact, that this is how we will proceed. Am I hearing everyone?
Well, how are we proceeding?
So, we'll, we'll go back.
Yep.
Sorry.
No, I was just looking at Dr. Burnin.
We'll go back and, and put some things together that we'll share with the policy committee next week, so the next couple days we'll be working on this, about things that could be done now while the regulation is completed, to address the immediate situation. So that will be our task over the next couple days, to put something together.
So the regulation piece would be discussed in, in policy?
Yep.
Yes.
Can I ask a clarification question? Are there any, are there any state regulations or guidelines for PE as a requirement in 11th and 12th grade? Is it?
Yeah. PE is a requirement.
Okay.
And, and the challenge with this is that, certainly in the immediate area, this is not a common practice. Opt-out doesn't, it, it's not something that happens in most other districts.
Opt-out meaning usually for the varsity-
Out of physics.
Opt-outted out of district.
Out of district. The varsity sports, it's a common, but-
In many places, all it is, is varsity sports at the schools.
Right.
And then sometimes you see, in communities where in, in the community program, within the school district, in the, in the general community, that may be approved, that's very limited.
Okay.
But it's rare to see out of the exact district, opt-outs that are out of district and non-
And the state, the state regs are very nebulous. It basically just says, you can do it, you can do it. And what's even more nebulous is the learning standards around 11th and 12th grade, physical education. They are, they're very, they're not, there's nothing hard and fast. It's, and it's weird, because the regulations refer to two, two or three periods of instruction per semester, two, one semester, and three, the other. That's all. They don't have any definition around that. They don't even say minutes, it's just periods. So if you have longer periods versus shorter periods, it's, it's even nebulous there. And then the question of what curriculum, what the learning standards are- what curriculum, what the learning standards are, which is what our curriculum is, is very, very loose and nebulous. And you can, you know, it would be very easy to make the argument that at 11th and 12th grade, the learning standards, the curriculum that you would require to meet the learning standards wouldn't actually have to happen within a gym class. It's demonstrate knowledge. It's a couple of things. It's very, you know, knowledge-based. It's not, you have to do these many, you have to do these things and hit these standards. It's really nebulous. Hard, hard to kind of cobble together. So it's really, you know, as we mentioned earlier, it's kind of up to us to what we want to do.
The only thing I see when you're talking about the curriculum in the 11th and 12th grade that you're worried that these opt-out athletes might miss, is if we look at the 9th and 10th grade curriculum, which I'm sure we will, and to see if we can just make sure that that, the yoga and the mindfulness and that they get that. Because the opt-out doesn't start till 11th grade. So even if you're, you know, 20 hours a week playing some sport in 9th grade, you can't opt-out.
Well, the state reg does allow 10th grade, but we don't do that. Just to add a little more confusion to the whole thing.
Maybe we can really focus on the curriculum in 9th and 10th grade when we don't allow, if we go that route in terms of opting out. Okay. Thank you.
So we're good on that?
Yes, I'm fine. And just as a point of information for the Board, regulations are not necessarily something that have to, they don't go through multiple reads. So when the regulation comes in and is presented on the 26th, that's it. We just accept it. It doesn't have to go back. So again, in terms of consistency and time concerns, this is not something that has to languish by parliamentary rules.
That's good. And I was assuming it was because of the other one. It was like, all right, well, we'll get to that by Thanksgiving.
Yes, so we then, we have a second.
Oh, right.
Policy, interscholastic athletics, 5280.
It's the same policy. It's just later on in the policy, the athletic placement process.
Yeah, so it's 5280, which is the interscholastic athletics. So it's a different, different piece of it, or a different policy, rather. Sorry. So this is 5280, which is the interscholastic athletics policy. And there has been some conversation that has taken place in a initial conversation. And so we wanted to have Susan here tonight to kind of talk with us about this section of the policy and with some thoughts related to that.
Sure. Thank you, Jane. So the athletic placement policy is another Commissioners' regulation. It used to be called selective classification. And at the New York State level, similar to any Commissioners' regulation, a school district can be more restrictive. So looking at our current policy, we are more restrictive. Just to give you some data points, and again, we are our own district, but to share with you that our basic legal alignment in Section 1, which is interscholastic athletics, that we consistently compete against Eastchester, Harrison, Pelham, Sleepy Hollow, Byram Hills, and Ardsley. All of these districts minus Byram Hills follow state guidelines with no restrictions. Byram Hills has a slightly restrictive policy, similar to ours, but where varsity is an open opportunity. So in looking at this and listening to some of our students, and upon my entry plan, this is where this first came up, with coaches and community members, to look at this policy and find what works for Rye. I feel that students should be appropriately placed upon competition at the appropriate level. And then looking in some of the schools that we compete against, by no means am I looking to say, let's follow the state recommendations without any restrictions. That's first and foremost. Where I would like to see positive change is at the varsity level, because if a student athlete is that talented or exceptional, that that 8th grader be allowed to participate at the varsity level with no restrictions. So that is, so after some of the feedback and looking at JV, looking at varsity, looking at 7th grade, 8th grade, et cetera, I felt that would be the most appropriate for Rye and appropriate where we are right now within the world of interscholastic athletics within Section 1.
How does that get determined? I mean, I'm...
So there's a process. A process right now, it's vetted in the sense that there is a coach recommendation. And upon that recommendation, the state requires a parental permission slip, a medical sign-off. And then obviously, that parental permission slip, I have conversation with that parent or guardian usually surrounding the ramifications and just to make sure they understand the consecutive seasons and obviously what that sport consists of, which means they're with high school students, et cetera. From then, they are entering into the process. And right now, because of following current Board policy, I often will share what our current policy is to make the students and the parents aware of, that if, say, they're in 8th grade trying out for a sport, that if there are cuts made, that they're cannot take the roster spot of a high school student at the JV level. So I'm usually very upfront about that, of course, because I want that child and family to understand that if they go through the process, there's no guarantee that that can, that comes to fruition.
Does that mean that if there's any cut, then they're automatically cut?
They're not. And I wouldn't say necessarily cut, but they can return to the modified level to participate.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is, I mean, and I'll just give an extreme example, but let's say LeBron James II shows up at our school. And so at 8th grade, he's, you know, ready to basically dominate varsity sports. But, you know, if there's 15 slots for the basketball team, 20 people in high school apply, and he's clearly the best person by far, but because there's 21 for 15, he's ineligible. Is that...
Correct.
I just wanted, okay.
Correct.
But is that, do we normally have, I mean, I guess, how many of our sports tend to have cuts and how many don't?
So are you, recommendation is to change that policy or are we sticking with that?
For the varsity level, for 8th grade, my recommendation is to allow open opportunity for 8th grade at the varsity level, maintaining our JV level of just what you recommended, just what's in our current policy.
So LeBron James II does not get to play if more than 15 people apply?
At the JV level.
Not the varsity.
At the varsity level. I'm asking that the recommendation be that that student, if they are talented enough, exceptional, as the Commissioners' regulation states, that they have the opportunity without restrictions to try out for varsity regardless of the number of roster spots.
The number, and if somebody else gets cut, okay.
And that is, I found to be the most consistent without going to the extreme of just a referral.
Right. I think, I mean, if I'm understanding correctly, that seems to make logical sense to me in the sense of the truly exceptional, you know, generational athlete who is ready to compete with 18-year-olds when they're 15 or 14 or whatever the right age is, that seems to make sense. If it's just, eh, you're a little better than everybody else, you can make the JV team, but that would take somebody else off of it. Okay, that's not such a thing that we need to make the exception. I think that's what you're saying.
And there was some great conversation around that, I felt, with the Policy Committee. And then just not to go for it all, in a sense that gives the opportunity to the underclassmen to still have an option at that JV level to compete. So that, you know, if they're really by definition appropriately placed on the varsity level, it very rarely could happen. I'll just give you one example that will help understand besides the regulation, five-sport classification, team sports. In a sport like tennis, where we have JV and varsity, the current policy in 8th grader could not participate in varsity because there's a JV program in place.
Gotcha.
So that 8th grader, regardless of cuts or no cuts, could be the best person on the team. And tennis can clearly show that, you know, it's not subjective. And right now, we, in a sense, don't allow that. So that's why I thought more appropriate, you know, JV maintain participation and allow the exceptional to go through that process. And obviously, I'd be a big part of that process as when that happens, because as I'm a part of all roster selections to begin with.
I mean, I'm assuming part of this is, I don't know if this has come up, but I assume part of it is also to not essentially put people in the, well, I have to leave Rye so my kid doesn't lose a couple of years, because they can't go into varsity when they're ready for it.
I mean, that I'm sure has come up, but I'm only in my year two, and I haven't heard concrete evidence of that, or I haven't seen concrete evidence of that, let's say.
No, it seems reasonable. I mean, it makes sense, I think.
Just so I'm totally clear, like, and unfortunately, I lost my internet connection again, so I've been staring over Jane's shoulder. But, so, thank you. See, everyone always thinks I'm crazy for reading paper. So that means that if there is this one in a, you know, I don't, first of all, I'm not really, I don't have a good sense of how often this is coming up. And maybe you don't yet either, because we had all of last year, which was kind of an anomaly. And then really, now we're full into our, we're just really getting into the first full year of somewhat normal participation back in sports. So if there is that one, you know, student who, an athlete who just happens to be exceptional, and they try out for the varsity team, so that means that the, one of those 11th or 12th graders that potentially is on that varsity team would then not be able to play for their 11th or 12th grade year.
Well, they presumably go to JV, right?
In their sport of choice.
Would they presumably then go to the JV?
No, that cannot, juniors can participate in JV, but we don't like to do that, just because usually, you know, when you put a junior in JV, it has to be under a very specific scenario with the high school, with varsity, excuse me.
So JV is mostly sophomore?
Primarily 9th and 10th grade. And then, you know, varsity is an open enrollment style usually. That could definitely happen. Now, if it's a senior that's progressively played through, that's where our implementation and my part in tryouts, I mean, we wouldn't have a senior tryout their senior year and after coming through the whole program. So it would really be focused probably more than likely on that junior or, say, that sophomore that was trying out. Many times, a lot of, some of our programs right now that I've seen have not cut at all. So your team sports where you have 11 starters, that you're more apt to allow the 8th grader, say, to participate in varsity with no cuts happening. It's your sports like where basketball, volleyball, where you have six and five on the court, or your individual sports like tennis, which I just mentioned, where this could come up. And in those basketball scenarios, it may or may not happen. It would be, that 11th grader may be cut anyway. They may not be. But they've been given an opportunity to grow, get better, and participate. And if they aren't cut, and they are not participating, or they're at that bottom level, if you will, they're not participating as much as they probably would like or feel they should.
But again, it would focus on the student with exceptional athletic ability that then has to, one, be recommended by the coach, go through an evaluation process, the medical certification, there are a lot of steps involved in it. It isn't just, I want to do it.
Of course, yeah. And this child, in my eyes, I always said when I went through this process with people, is that that child would be literally in a starting role on that, like, we wouldn't bring a child up successfully that, and place them on a varsity program to not participate.
So the only other alternative would be that 8th grader would potentially be able to play JV?
Not if there were cuts made. Because right now, the current policy does not allow that.
Not if there were cuts currently happening in JV?
Right.
Got it.
And Susan, in the policy now, it currently talks about non-contact sports. And so the recommendation is irregardless of the sport.
Correct. Good point, Jane. So that, I'm sorry. So then that means there's the potential for an 8th grade student to play a contact sport such as football? Soccer's contact, baseball's contact, softball's contact, sports that you might not think contact are contact. They're defined by the Commissioners of Regulation. So with that being said, the non-contact sports are golf, tennis, cross-country, track, just to name a few. Almost every other sport's considered contact.
But this would be to not have that stipulation?
No stipulation, for 8th grade only.
I was just going to ask, so I'm supportive of the change. Just a question of how you would advertise this, I guess? I mean, would it, you know, how do you identify that unbelievable tennis player that maybe, you know, isn't playing modified tennis?
Right. So there, it's, I completely get what you're asking, but it's not an advertisement in the sense that it's not a, it shouldn't be driven by a parent or shouldn't be driven. It should be really driven by a coach. So if a student is interested, let's say, and they reach out, like, I'll give you an example. This year with the current policy, when a parent reached out to me, I have no idea who that 8th grader is. I immediately reached out to our coach, Tony Campbell, and said, are you aware of this student-athlete? And he was. He knew exactly who the child was, had older siblings that participated. Like, it was, it was appropriate for me to test them and go through that process, and then where they fell. And they so have, that they fell as an 8th grader is one of the top overall. And we had no cuts, so it didn't matter at that point. So with that being said, it's still process-driven. And when someone reaches out to me, I don't know their abilities, so I have to reach out and gather them before I put them through that.
Of course. I was just thinking of, if there's not a modified sport like golf.
Sure.
You could have an amazing golfer.
Oh, yes, yes.
And I'm just curious, if I have an 8th grade amazing golfer, how do I know as a parent that this is an option for my child, I guess, is what I'm...
Well, I think depending on, when we, on our website, we have a list of our levels of play and what's offered. And there's no modified golf, because there isn't one in the section level. So I would hope that as we continue to communicate to our families and communities, that that information gets out, but also if they have questions, that they would reach out and ask. Because we definitely have got some great questions from families on what's offered.
And so then just, so this is for 8th grade only, or there's also a component for some 7th graders, or I lost me?
It's already in the policy. So the only amendment that I'm recommending right now is for the 8th grade, for the varsity level with no restrictions. So an 8th grader may try out for, presently, if we had a freshman team or a JV team with no modified team in place, they could not make that team without, if there were any kind of cuts. The recommendation is for a varsity level with no restrictions.
So right now, if there's no cuts, a 7th grader could conceivably go up, and that stays the same?
That stays the same.
What would be different is the 8th grader who can't go up with cuts, and neither can a 7th grader, now the 8th grader would be allowed, but not the 7th grader?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm getting, again, I'm going to check for understanding. And I seem to be getting a general sense that we are comfortable with the Policy Committee moving forward to examine the changes and put forth suggested policy changes to the Board for a fuller discussion related to the specific elements of the change of the policy.
Yeah, I would agree. One thing I would just want to throw into the conversation as you're reviewing it is considering the, you know, and again, I don't know how often this is actually coming up, but considering a 13-year-old, who's, which is what most 8th graders are, playing a varsity sport, and the massive developmental differences between those two, and maybe not massive for everyone, but there are developmental differences between those two ages, and the sort of stress that goes along with that. I mean, we just had this whole discussion about added stress for students and things like that. So I just, I would say, I would ask that that be as part of the conversation, and maybe it already has been, because you've been talking about these things.
You can rest assured that we are having lots of discussion, and Kelsey can attest the best.
Robust.
Rather robust discussions as it's related to students' social and emotional wellness.
It's going to be an overnight policy meeting.
So yes, those are certain, certainly conversations and considerations. And also, it will come as no surprise that we'll be asking for some data around it to see how frequent, in fact, is this, what is the kind of impact and potential impact, not only for the 8th grade student, but also for the senior or the junior who has committed to having a sense of belonging by being part of a team. And we don't want to then adversely reflect, you know, impact juniors and seniors in a different way. So there's a lot to balance, and most certainly, we'll be talking about that further.
Yeah. And I think just question marks, as you were describing, how the example that you just gave with, I'm not sure which sport it was, Tony Campbell you mentioned was the coach, like procedurally, initially, you were talking about this is coach recommended, but then a parent called you and you went to the coach, and then it was recommended. So like, just, I'd like to under, like, maybe nail that down a little bit as you have your conversations, too.
Sounds like it could be ripe for a regulation.
Just throwing it out there.
Policy, get ready.
And I'd like the other discussion we had.
And I'd like the other discussion we had, as far as immediacy goes. We, I know, have a policy committee, and I know this goes deeper than what we've discussed, but winter sports do start November 15th, and then spring sports start March 15th. So just putting that out there.
Do we, I mean, obviously without mentioning anybody specific, but are you aware of anyone, like, now, that if we switch this policy, it would likely impact for...
For the winter?
Or, yeah, or just any sports.
I've had, the only, I've only had two students reach out asking about JV basketball. So I just reread the policy, so it didn't come into effect, but I'm aware of one potential.
By the way, one question, is it all based on grade you are in or age? You know, so if you have a child who's been held back, who is in 8th grade, but is actually as old, or maybe even older than most of the freshmen, is it, are they still, they're still treated as an 8th grader, or do they, they treat it differently because they're older?
So the APP policies, the physical aspect is done by age. Your consecutive season's based on grade, and that's a whole nother discussion.
This is not something where, you know, if you, if you're held back and you technically could have enrolled to be an 8th grader, but are actually a 7th grader, that therefore you're eligible as a 7th grader? No, the policy is written as grade.
Grade.
Not year.
Good.
Okay. Well, I'm sure policy will have robust discussions, just like we did tonight.
We do every month. Every month we do this.
Thank you very much.
You're going to arm wrestle someone for that.
Thanks, Susan Kirby. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Susan.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think that brings us to communications to and from the board.
As we discussed tonight, we had an audit committee meeting last Tuesday. It was virtual, because the conference room at Central Office is, was flooded, and we, obviously, we approved the external audit and the management response letter. And I will just plug that we are looking for one more person for the audit committee. And as Eric said in his address, something on the website is posted about that. So if any community members are interested, please send along your candidacy. Any others?
Well, Jen, you started the meeting with this, but I have to say thank you to Dr. Byrne as well, for his liaising with the city and the Rye Police Department around pedestrian safety for the students. It's really wonderful to see the collaboration. I think the mayor, the city manager, the new interim public safety officer, there has been a lot of collaboration this year, more so than I recall, just having watched this over the years. And I just, I know that takes a lot of effort and leadership, and so Dr. Byrne just said true thanks for that. I think it will make a big difference for our students, and hope to see that collaboration continue.
Well, thank you, and I just echo the thanks to the city, to Greg Usery, the city manager, Lieutenant Ampuso, and Detective Gabe Caputo, who I think you saw in my update to you last week, was doing safety presentations, kindergarten through second grade over at Midland. I think it actually made it to the, my Rye yesterday or today. So thanks to the city for that partnership and collaboration. I saw Gabe out in three schools today while I was visiting, so it's great to see.
All right. Then I think that's it for communications to and from the board, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein, all those in favor? Six, nothing. Thank you all for joining us. Please join us for our next Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, October 26th, where we will have a book talk about The Power of Different, The Link Between Disorder and Genius by Gail Saltz. Good night.